God, that's not even retained.
I got one of these. I already have.
You don't have to take it.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, yeah.
I responded right away.
They play for blow.
Oh, I played it. Yeah, cut. Take one of them. As I said, with this part of Pleasure Valley. Yeah, I played. Couple of times.
Did you get these?
Okay, I'd like to call the regular Tiffin City Council meeting of Monday, March 3rd, to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Dougherty.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today seeking your wisdom, guidance, and grace of our city council. Bless each member with clarity of thought, compassion in decision-making, and a spirit of unity. May they lead with integrity, always striving for justice, fairness, and the well-being of our community. Grant them strength in challenges, patience in discussions, and courage to do what is right. Let their work bring prosperity, peace, and harmony to our city. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Dougherty.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Herniman. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Sney.
Here.
And Councilmember Thacker.
Here. Let the record show that six of seven councilmembers are present. Minutes from the regular and committee of the whole meeting minutes from February 18th were distributed. Are there any substitutions, deletions, corrections? Kevin, or Councilwoman Reesner, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I propose to start the meeting of the whole, committee of the whole at our next meeting, which would be the 17th.
Can I, can I have you do that a little later when I ask for committee of the whole? We're under minutes right now.
I can do it then.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Were there any substitutions, corrections, deletions to the February 18th, 2025 regular and committee of the whole meeting minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be, will stand as presented. Committee reports, Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee meeting was held February 20th, 2025, in council chambers. Purpose was to request, discuss mayor's request for legislation 2506, 9, and 10. And attending were committee members Reesner and Jones, also Mayor Wilkinson, City Administrator Dutrow, Finance Director Kaufman, and Law Director Fowler. Reesner called the meeting to order at 5:18 PM. First, discussion commenced on the allocation of opioid settlement funds, referencing past data provided by the Law Director and State Auditor. Darren Pivot are identified as eligible recipients with representatives from both programs having previously presented to the council. The mayor presented various revenue scenarios. The city of Tiffin is expected to receive its share of the opioid settlement fund averaging 18,000. This will drop off significantly after 2032, but with a proposed contribution of 30% to pivot, we are able to fund the DARE program through 2032. Seneca County will contribute two-thirds of their opioid settlement funds to pivot. Dutrow suggested the three-year commitment with reevaluation while Jones recommended reassessing DARE periodically as it's still in its early stages. Fowler noted the opioid settlement lasts 18 years, after which alternative funding could be necessary. He will draft resolutions based on council intentions. Dutrow emphasized the need for detailed budgeting. The current unencumbered balance in the One Ohio Opioid Fund stands at 55,000. And as of now, there's been no purchase orders open for 2025 by the DARE program. Should POs be open for the entire budgeted amount, the unencumbered balance would decrease to 35,000. Kaufman noted that pivot's funding is dependent on projected revenue. Presently, the unencumbered balance remains at 55,000 in the One Ohio Opioid Fund for 2025. For 2025, the DARE program has budgeted 20,000 in addition to carryover POs from 2024, amounting to $1,175.84. However, no funds have been budgeted for pivot from the One Ohio Opioid Fund for 2025. Reesner will forward details to, of this meeting, to the council president for discussion at a future committee of the whole meeting to gather input from the entire council and finalize any language and amounts in potential legislation. Next, the general fund carryover balance policy. The mayor recommended maintaining a minimum carryover balance equivalent to two-thirds of operating revenues, 16.7%, and proposed 25% minimum to safeguard the city against emergencies and unforeseen expenses. A spreadsheet illustrated the relationship between the unencumbered balance and capital projects. With the River Wall Assessment Reconstruction cited as an example, all transfers will still require city council approval. Dutrow explained that transferring funds from the general fund to the capital fund is a one-time action that cannot be easily reversed. Kaufman noted that the government finance officers administration recommend such policies. A complete policy draft was emailed to all council members following the meeting. Jones motioned for the Law Director prepare legislation for 25-09, seconded by Reesner, and the motion carried unanimously. Finally, Congress may sunset tax provisions for tax-exempt municipal bonds, crucial for infrastructure projects. The Ohio Municipal League requested our support. Dutrow noted there is no cost involved. Jones motioned for the Law Director to draft legislation for 25-10, seconded by Reesner, and the motion carried unanimously. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:48 PM.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Reesner? Okay, law and community planning?
None.
Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones?
No reports, Madam President.
Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Madam President. A meeting was held in city chambers on February 26th, 2025. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's requests for legislation number 25-11, a reappointment to the Port Authority, mayor's request for legislation 25-12, an appointment to the Port Authority, and mayor's request for legislation 25-13, an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and Kyle Dougherty. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, and Councilmember Dennis Sney. Councilman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:15 PM. Hayes asked the mayor about the two appointments to the Port Authority. Mayor Wilkinson started with the background of the candidate for the reappointment. Councilmember Dougherty asked what the Port Authority does, and Wilkinson gave an overview of the Port Authority. Law Director Fowler gave historical background on the Port Authority and the candidate for reappointment. Councilmember Thacker motioned to accept the reappointment. Dougherty seconded, and the motion carried three to zero. Wilkinson introduced the candidate for appointment to the Port Authority and explained the reason for the open position. Thacker motioned to accept the appointment. Hayes seconded, and the motion carried three to zero. Mayor Wilkinson introduced the candidate for the appointment to the zoning board of appeals and explained the reason for the open position. Hayes motioned to accept the appointment. Thacker seconded, and the motion carried three to zero. In other business, Wilkinson stated there will be a new appointment upcoming for the Seneca County Board of Health. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:27 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, recreation and public property, Councilmember Sney?
No report at this time, Madam President.
There is no report for street sidewalks and sewers. Economic development and downtown planning, anybody from that committee?
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anybody see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Councilwoman Reesner?
Thank you, Madam President. The, I'd like to suggest we move the committee of the whole meeting that's prior to the city council meeting on March 17th back to 6:30 PM instead of 6:45 to discuss the allocation of opioid settlement funds.
And any other business?
Any other business that would come before us?
Does that require a second? Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Councilwoman Dougherty, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, six to zero. Okay, we are now under reports of the officers. I have two items from the mayor's office. The first being a proclamation. Whereas individuals with developmental disabilities, their families, friends, and advocates contribute greatly to the vitality and diversity of our community in Tiffin, Ohio. And whereas developmental disabilities impact people of all races, genders, and backgrounds, but with the support of inclusive communities, individuals with developmental disabilities can thrive and contribute meaningfully to society. And whereas promoting awareness and understanding of developmental disabilities fosters a culture of compassion, inclusion, and acceptance, helping to break down stereotypes and misconceptions. And whereas the city of Tiffin recognizes the efforts of educators, service providers, caregivers, employers, and advocates who work tirelessly to support and empower individuals with developmental disabilities. And whereas, Tiffin is committed to creating a more inclusive and accessible community where all residents can live fulfilling and independent lives free from discrimination and barriers. And whereas, March has been designated as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to increase public awareness about the many abilities of individuals with developmental disabilities and to celebrate their contributions to society. Now therefore, I, Lee W. Wilkinson, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Tiffin, Ohio. And I encourage all residents to join in, recognizing the value and potential of every individual in our community. Let us commit ourselves to creating a supportive and inclusive environment where everyone, regardless of ability, can reach their fullest potential. Okay, and it looks like we have some people here who are willing to accept this proclamation. I would invite you to come up and maybe give us some information about events you have going on.
Oh, I should.
See the proclamation?
There you go.
Do you want to say something? Do you want to talk about?
I should.
Want to introduce yourself first?
Oh.
Microphone right here.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Microphone's right here. I'll move it down a little bit for you.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Cindy Moyer. I'm glad to be here tonight to represent this month. And I like, I like to tell you a couple of things that we have coming up, which is bakery bingo. If you don't win money with this, you just get some goodies. And also, it is on Thursday, March 13th, at 5:30 PM. And the doors open at 4:30. We'll have a concession stand, and we'll, we'll have a 50-50 drawing. And I would, I would love it if all of you could come there. The cards are $5 apiece. And also, our celebrity basketball game at Heidelberg's, Heidelberg's, settling gym. And the game starts at 7 o'clock, and the doors open at 6. I have some good news. It does not cost to get in. You get in there free. And there will be concessions there, too. So fill up at the goodies. There you go. Got it. Okay. As a fun Sunday, there's dry food, ham and chicken dinner. And it's on,
Sunday, April 13th.
Sunday, April 13th. Pack up from level one to order codine. And checks or payment to our council SCOC. And had a Easter hunt by the acid club. Sorry.
Okay. I want to also thank Amy Miller, who's the director of the cash department, who's here with us tonight. My name is Lou Hurst. I'm the superintendent out at the Opportunity Center, and I'd love to see you come out at the events. March is DD Awareness Month, and I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the things that we've been doing in the community. Over the past year, and some of you may or may not know, the Opportunity Center purchased the cancer center from Mercy Hospital and the Optima Building, and we've converted those over the summer. We had them renovated, and we moved our SSA Service Coordination staff to one side of the building, and the adult services program that used to be out at the Opportunity Center is now in the other two buildings. What a lot of people don't know is we serve currently, this is my 20th year. When I first started, we were serving about 300 families in Seneca County. Now we're up to about 550 families. We've seen significant growth. You talked about the opioid epidemic, but that's one of the things that we're seeing is children that were born addicted to opioids who have impulse control issues. The school districts are struggling, so one of the things that we've tried to do is by moving the adults, we are required by federal rules to move the adults away from the school. So now we have a kind of an empty wing, which we're in the process of renovating right now, which will be adding additional classrooms to serve additional kids. The school districts are greatly struggling with children with significant behaviors, and that's kind of our niche and our expertise, our goal is to help those children get caught up, learn to speak up, have a voice, to improve their lives and improve the lives of the community. Other things that people don't know about us is we are directly related to employing probably about 350 to 400 individuals, not necessarily with disabilities. That's professionals in the field, both at the Opportunity Center and contract agencies. So when we move the adult services program out, we contract with Rodney Bigger with Preferred Pathways. We also contract with Hope, Windwreath. You may see different vans driving around town. Those are all directly funded by us. So people don't know that, but as, as we've moved more and more getting people out in the community, our primary focus is how do we support agencies to support people? Again, I thank you for all of your support over the years. I do want to see if at some point when we move to the Optima Buildings, is looking at is there a way to work with the city to possibly get a wider crosswalk across Market Street in front of Wendy's there to make it safe for folks. The idea was to get the adults out in the community so they have access to that greater shopping area. And it's a little hazardous crossing right now. So at some point, I'd like to work on that and see if we could partner with a grant to, to make that happen. But I do think the support of the council and the city and the citizens of the city that make us a great organization to be able to support people. Anybody have any questions for me? No? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all so much for coming tonight and, and keeping us informed. And I appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you so much.
And I encourage you to come out to the game. It's a great time.
Thank you so much. Okay. Also, under the mayor's report, I, we have a presentation tonight from Chief Rob Chapel. It's all you. Yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, city council members and citizens of Tiffin. It is once again my honor to present the annual report of the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division. This report is more than just a summary of statistics. It's a reflection of the hard work, challenges, and triumphs that we have shaped, that have shaped our department over the past year. Tonight, as we look back, we will also look ahead to the future towards new opportunities for growth, innovation, and continued service to our community. To begin, please allow me to provide a brief history of our fire department, which has brought us to today. So our fire department has a rich history, and it dates back to December 18th, 1893, when city council passed legislation to create the first full-time paid fire department in the city of Tiffin. William Major Bloom was named as the first fire chief of the Tiffin Fire Department. And as I sit here today, I'm now the 13th, so lucky 13. Over the next years, we experienced many milestones, including the delivery of our first motor chemical wagon in 1917. This ended the era of horse-drawn firefighting equipment. This vehicle was built here in Tiffin by the Tiffin Wagon Works and is now privately owned, and I believe still somewhat local. In 1940, we moved into our current downtown station, which was part of the new municipal building, which we sit in currently. For 85 years, we have responded to the needs of our citizens from the central location. Previously, our downtown station was located where our finance department offices exist today. You may be able to make out the bell at the top of the old station. The bell sounded the alarm for the Great Tiffin Fire of 1872. And before the building was raised, the bell was removed and today sits at the top of the host tower at Station 1. Occasionally, you might hear it ringing, a bell randomly ringing in downtown. That's somebody walking through the hose room and pulling the old rope there. And I think a lot of us probably don't realize that it's been around for quite a while now. The current Station 2 at the corner of North Washington Street and Second Avenue was occupied in 1966. At that time, it cost about $90,000 to build this station. As the story goes, a city council member at that time was on vacation in Florida and saw a new station that had been built there. He liked it so much, he tracked down the architect, and the city obtained plans to build a similar station here in Tiffin. The new station replaced the original building constructed in 1907. Coincidentally, the decision to replace that station was largely out of a concern about the structural integrity of the station's floor, somewhat similar to what we're facing today with our downtown station. Until 1997, Tiffin EMS and Tiffin Fire were two separate entities. Seeing the trend of combining these two services, Chief Ennis faced the task of merging the two departments and thereby created the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division. Because of this, we now have more staff, which are also dual-trained and capable of performing both firefighting skills and paramedic-level emergency medical care. Today, the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division provides 24/7 fire protection for the entire city. We also have auto aid agreements with neighboring departments in several nearby townships. These agreements allow for additional firefighters and resources to be called to assist an agency with a working structure fire. Some have compared fire departments to an insurance policy. Yes, our level of service is not cheap, and nobody ever hopes to need us. But when one considers the billions of dollars of private and commercial property we protect and the lives and incomes that can be impacted, this is not an area where you want to settle for a base plan. In 2024, our personnel responded on 740 non-EMS calls for service, including 144 traffic accidents, 34 fires, of which 14 were building fires, and over 60 responses for utility issues, things such as downed power lines in storms, gas lines being struck from other utility work. So as you can see, our, our role extends beyond putting out fires. We are who people call when they aren't sure of who else to ask for help. There's a high level of trust placed in us, and we must strive to always meet those expectations, even if we have to crawl into a storm sewer to save some baby ducks. To prepare for many of the calls we encounter, our personnel dedicated over 1,400 hours of fire training in 2024. EMS continues to be a critical component of our services. With 30 of our 38 personnel certified as paramedics, we are able to provide the highest level of pre-hospital emergency care. Our coverage area extends beyond just the city limits, also serving Clinton Township and Northern Eden Township. Our staff completed over 1,550 hours of training to help prepare them to respond accordingly to medical emergencies. In 2024, we responded on 3,005 EMS incidents, and we had 3,267 patient encounters. The reason that that number can be larger is a car accident may have multiple people involved. So from that 3,267 patient encounters, 2,317 patients were transported to area hospitals, primarily Tiffin Mercy. More than 800 patients were treated but not transported. And that 26% of patient contacts, if we don't transport them to the hospital, we don't actually get reimbursed any payment for that in the state of Ohio. In order to be paid for that service, they have to be transported. It's some legislation that's been looked at and considered numerous times and to this point has not been changed. So financially, though, our EMS billing service generated over $780,000 in revenue last year, while township contracts and event standbys brought in an additional 61,700. This funding is 100% applied to the general fund. Beginning in 2026, we will be partnering with our billing company and in an effort to capture additional revenues from Medicaid through the state of Ohio. That is still kind of in the planning stages right now at the state level, and I believe is being introduced in the biannual budget bill. Showing since 2018, our emergency responses have steadily been increasing each year. 2024 marked an increase of more than 21% more calls for service over that six-year period, responding to 3,745 calls in 2024. For those that have maybe seen various versions of this report before, in 2020 during COVID, that was actually the first year in the 20 I've been with the department that we've actually had a decrease in call volume. A lot of people were, I think, just afraid to leave their homes and weren't seeking EMS care at that time. But as we got through the, those initial months of the pandemic and then into 2021, that's where we saw significant growth, and it's continued on since then. When we split our emergency responses by city ward and township, we continue to see that the third ward has the greatest number of responses. 2024 alone had a 12% growth year over year. All other areas we respond to were within a small percentage difference when compared to 2023. Our role in public safety extends to fire prevention and inspections. Annually, we conduct over 800 initial building inspections and average 350 to 400 re-inspections. A majority of these are done by the on-duty crews between handling emergency calls, training, and other tasks that are assigned. It is an increasingly difficult task for them to do that. Deputy Chief Holman routinely performs plan reviews for new construction or renovations before zoning permits are issued, and this ensures the fire code, the fire code is met. before zoning permits are issued, and this ensures the fire code, the fire code is met for these buildings. We also assist with consulting for new business development to determine the potential feasibility of a site to meet that business's needs. These combined efforts are crucial in reducing the risk of fire, improving safety, and ultimately protecting lives and property. None of this would be possible without the dedicated personnel that we have here at Tiffin Fire. As of today, we have 38 firefighters, and with 27 that are what we would call line firefighters, and they're either EMTs or paramedics. We have six lieutenants who function as first-line supervisors, and our three captains oversee their crews and are transitioning to more of an administrative role within the department. All of these personnel work 24 hours on and 48 hours off. Deputy Chief Holman oversees our Fire Prevention Bureau, training efforts, and EMS operations. And although not a firefighter herself, I'd be remiss not to mention our administrative assistant, Amanda Hanum, who works in tandem with our EMS billing service, handles much of our social media posting, and compiles payroll and many other reports for the benefit of our department. The realization that we presently have 38 firefighters cannot be understated. In fact, it has been since October of 2018, since the last time that we reached that milestone. Whether it be to shrinking new hire lists, higher attrition, hiring freezes due to a global pandemic, or budgetary constraints, for the last six years, our staff have been responding on more calls than ever with fewer people than we had 20 years ago. I appreciate the efforts of the administration to get us back to this point, and I appreciate the patience of our personnel as we face this challenge. In 2024, and so far in early 2025, we've welcomed several new members. Firefighter EMTs Samuel Allen, Tom Bland, Drew Unangst, Austin Woods, and most recently, Brandon Gabeauer. We also had two of our personnel complete paramedic training and pass the national registry examination to obtain their paramedic certifications. So we now have firefighter paramedics Josh Smith and Sean Rollinson. The Bureau of Labor Statistics reports the average tenure of people staying at the same job being just over 4.1 years. So it's important to recognize the commitment to service and the milestones of the following members from last year. Achieving 25 years of service was firefighter/paramedic Joel Margroff. 20 years, some guy named Rob Chapel. For 10 years, we had Lieutenant Scott Brooks, and then firefighter/paramedics Isaac Kaiser, Bill Hoffert, Danielle Reynolds, and Travis Staley. And five years of service was firefighter/paramedic John Suter. We appreciate and celebrate the dedication of these individuals who serve with professionalism and passion. This slide is not a typo. You may notice the 2021 at the top. This is part of my original presentation early in 2021 when I was still interim fire chief. I spoke to some of the goals I had for the department at that time. While work still remains, we have made tremendous progress. For example, we have brought in new technology, making our scheduling and payroll process better and much more accurate. We have also changed to a new software for all of our incident reporting and inspections. Technology now touches nearly every aspect of our work. Since 2021, we have invested capital dollars into our stations, attempting to provide fire stations our staff and our community can both be proud of. Officer development continues and is improving. Today's company officers are being utilized very differently than in the past, and an organization's culture cannot change overnight. As mentioned, we have finally returned to full staffing, and now we must focus on retention. Through our attendance at public relation events, we are strengthening our bond with the community and businesses that support us, whether it is in visiting a preschool or maybe just ringing the bell for Salvation Army and collecting way more donations than the police department does for two years in a row if anybody happened to be counting. We are also a part of this community, and being a part of the events is the least we can do to express our gratitude for their support. As we prepare for the future, our department is committed to efficient progress. My primary goals for 2025 include studying ways to utilize artificial intelligence within the fire service. AI is changing the world, and the fire service will change also. For example, if a car accident happens on West Market Street, AI integration will soon be able to triangulate multiple calls from a certain area. It will be able to sort the 911 calls to dispatch, allowing the dispatchers to more quickly process these calls. This efficiency will allow for the dispatchers to communicate better with police, fire, and EMS as we are responding. Developing a strategic plan for future fire stations. The lack of this infrastructure is already creating ripple effects through our vehicle replacement schedules and the growing needs of our department. Our city, our fire department, and the fire service have all changed significantly over the last 30 years. Fire stations that are 60 and 85 years old, unfortunately, are constraining the division's growth and effectiveness. Investing in officer development training to cultivate strong leadership within our department. Enhancing employee satisfaction by working closely with the Fire Department Union to improve wages, benefits, and retention efforts. Strengthening relationships with local agencies, stakeholders, and community organizations to ensure cohesion with emergency preparedness. Improving service levels by adopting the latest firefighting and EMS practices and technologies. Our department is continually evolving to meet the needs of the community. By focusing on strategic growth and technological advances, we will remain at the forefront of providing exceptional service and safety. Tiffin Fire Rescue Division has always been resilient, dedicated, and adaptable. As we look toward 2025, our focus remains on investing in our people, improving our operations, and ensuring the safety of our citizens. I want to accept my gratitude to the City Council and the administration for your ongoing support, and to the citizens of Tiffin, thank you for placing your trust in us. At this time, I'll welcome any questions or comments.
Are there any questions or comments for Chief Chapel? Yes, Councilmember Hayes?
Yeah. Thank you, first of all. Thank you for everything you do with the department. And I've talked to a few of the guys on staff that really, it sounds like, really enjoy, you know, everything you guys have going on and the whole culture and everything. I'm just curious if you have any kind of actionable steps of what's next in terms of the new fire stations, or if there's anything else to share on that? I'm just kind of curious where that's at.
Yes, so at this point, we've done some background work a little bit in doing some GIS mapping of different areas in the city that we believed would be suitable locations to put a fire station in that general area. Using that GIS study, we were able to evaluate what response times might look like based on either a two- or a three-station model. It's just a matter of committing to a specific location, knowing what other infrastructure and other projects might be slated into those areas. We certainly don't want to do anything that could hamper other business growth or development within the city because we took what might have ended up being a prime real estate location. But yeah, we just have to kind of dial in a little bit deeper into that, and that'll be the first thing, once we procure the site. Then a lot of it will be working to determine what the overall cost of a project might be of that scope, and then looking possibly at things like levies, or how do we go about obtaining the financing for that? Thank you.
I have a question along those same lines. Is there a specific, or maybe a general timeline in which you're looking to have something like this happen?
My personal goal, if it was solely up to me, I would love to see this done within the next five years. Without taking the rest of the evening to explain the constraints that the current stations are placing on our vehicles, our replacement schedule would have us getting a new engine in 2027, and then backlining at Station 2, the engine that we have downtown right now. That engine will not fit in that building, so we can't get a new station in '27, which means we're going to be putting more wear and tear on this engine. And instead of kind of benching it for a little bit and keeping it as a reserve, it's, it could be its own presentation, so to speak. So the goal would be to try and have something done in the next five years. I'm committed to working with the administration and council to try and make that my little dream a reality when it comes to that. I think it is possible and realistic that it can be achieved, and yeah, we'll just see where the road goes next.
Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
Thanks again. You guys do great work. I was at the Trigger Trunk this last October, and they got called twice. They had to pull out and go out and...
That happens. It makes some of the PR events a little difficult, but more fascinating for the kids because they like to see the lights and sirens while we're leaving.
And I know the third ward made the chart again for the most calls. I assume it's because it's probably the largest ward, and West Market Street, there's probably more accidents there, and you got the Willows and, you know, some other...
Yeah, a lot of the nursing homes and healthcare facilities out there.
Any other suggestion to how we could get that number down, if there's anything that...
I really don't think that there's much that can be done to bring it down. Some of the increase in call volumes that we're seeing relating to some of the healthcare facilities on that end of the city are due to a lack of private ambulance service. That was something that, when the Affordable Care Act became fully in place, and the private ambulance, that whole industry really kind of suffered. So they're still in bigger cities where there's more of those still in existence, but for the number of, the amount of need that exists in Tiffin and Seneca County for something like that, it just kind of support its own ambulance or business here locally. So we've absorbed some of that call volume, and I don't see that changing anytime soon.
All right, thanks.
Any other, Councilmember Snack?
Madam President. Okay, you talked about the third fire station, that we get the building up, like, get all the equipment. But what I'm concerned about is do you foresee having enough personnel? Or are you going to be taking from other stations? Or do you have a plan in place to recruit more people or what have you?
Yeah, so kind of a twofold question there. So yes, currently, with our minimum manning of nine, we would have just enough people that I would be comfortable staffing three stations. We would have three firefighter, paramedics at each station if we went with a three-station model. Ideally, it would be nice if we could add one additional person per shift so that we would have, what in most fire departments we refer to as like a battalion chief, that would oversee all three stations, and they would also be available to go and assist if there was the need for an extra set of hands at an incident somewhere in the city. If we were to go with a two-station model like what we have right now, where perhaps we might look at if we were able to locate another station somewhere in the downtown area or near to it, that losing the central location that we have here on South Monroe Street wouldn't be as impactful, then yeah, absolutely, we're ready to go with a two-station model as well.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so much for this.
Thank you all.
I think next, we are under, unless, Vic, you have anything else from the mayor's office you'd like to add?
Thank you, Council President. Actually, I would like to bring something up. Just wanted to make mention, today, Tiffin/Seneca Economic Partnership and Fosteria Economic Development Corporation announced that the Tiffin/Seneca micropolitain, that is, the Tiffin/Seneca area, was announced that they have ranked number six in the country. Now, that's out of, I believe it's about 550, almost 600 similar-sized cities to us, so that's really phenomenal. This year, Finley again was ranked number one. It'll be, it'll be great to see if one day we could, we could get that kind of achievement. But as somebody who spent some time in economic development before I came here to the city, getting that achievement, being in the top 10 like that, truly phenomenal. So a lot of really great development projects, just for everyone's understanding, to achieve this success, you need to add a number of either new jobs, a significant investment in a company, or have a new building of a certain floor size go up. So with those kinds of projects, typically, that's our companies that have been here for a number of years, that continue to invest in our communities. And we've seen some incredible growth in some of the companies here in Tiffin as well as companies in Fosteria and in the surrounding county. So really, really great news. I think we shall be very proud of this achievement.
Thank you. Okay, Clerk of Council, Anne Forrest?
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
No report, Madam President.
Director of Law, Zachary Fowler?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I do have just a few things. One is just, we kind of discussed earlier, but just, we did get an update with our publisher on the codified ordinances. So in your packet was an ordinance to adopt that. But on the website, if you go now, you'll already see that those codified ordinances are updated. That's current up through January 6th of this year for what council has done. And then we have some that are mirror state laws, far as like criminal law. That's current, will be current up to June 26th of last year. So just so you're aware, that's updated. I don't think any of you really keep the binder anymore, but if you do, I know Ian has a few extra supplements. That's item one. Item two, I shared with you all, is the State Auditor's bulletin. We've shared this internally, but this is from the state auditor about the revenue that's generated from marijuana sales. So if you recall, with the passage of the recreational marijuana set of statutes, there's that 10% tax on sales. First page just kind of describes the process. So that tax is collected, it goes into a tax fund held at the state, and then out of that, the one portion that's relevant for Tiffin is that 36% to the host community fund. Of that, you will then share and get your respective proportion out of it. So we just know a few details that we didn't know before. One is that those payments will come from the Department of Taxation. At the top of page two, it just tells you that it'll be at the end of the month, following the end of the quarter. So we could potentially get our first distribution in the end of April. We are a host community. We do have one distributor here in the city. The other part that I thought was important to share with you all is the accounting guidance that they gave. Kind of like what you've done with, say, even the opioid fund, this just describes the process that you would go through to, you could establish a separate fund, this will generally just trickle into the general fund without any other action. But what you all will need to decide is what the money is used for. There's no restriction. It's whatever you decide to allocate it for. We collect other kind of tax revenue. We still collect some cigarette tax revenue, for example. So if you wanted to make it as general for, or basic as just general municipal purposes, that would be fine. But it is something at some point to probably decide, and then as you do a budget for '26, you just want to incorporate that in there. So we, you know, may be helpful once we know at the end of April what that money even looks like. So that's that. And then just something to go along with that host community fund is that at the state level, there is some bills being passed around in the Ohio General Assembly to revamp marijuana law altogether. So they are looking to combine medical and recreational into one chapter. That's gone through the Senate. One thing that was on the table was to raise the tax from 10 to 15%. That was taken out of the Senate bill. There is also talk of removing the host community fund, and the state would retain all of that money and then decide how to share that back to the local municipalities. That was also removed from the Senate bill. The House still is planning to have its own bill, and then they'll have to sort out the details and get something passed. So there's always the potential that comes back, but for right now, the chance of losing out on the local money, at least, was taken off the table. at least was taken off the table. So those things, I don't think there's any request at this time for you guys to act on it, but I think it's something you should just start to process, and then we can discuss at a later time. And those are my two items, and that concludes my report.
Great, okay. We're under written communications. I'll ask the clerk to read.
Thank you. We have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-15, easement for 806 West Market Street.
Mayor's Request for Legislation 25-15 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-16, Tax Incentive Review Council, TIRC, recommendations.
Mayor's Request for Legislation 25-16 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-17, Appointment to the Seneca County Board of Health of Eileen Kleinfeldter.
Mayor's Request for Legislation 25-17 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 25-18, Rotary Clock Project.
Mayor's Request for Legislation 25-18 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F24-4, To amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the mayor's budget.
This has been prepared for tonight's meeting as Ordinance 2025-24.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We're now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step up to the podium, sign in, and direct your questions to me. Okay. We're now under motions. Are there any motions this evening?
Sit.
Go ahead.
Just as we talked to committee, the whole, now's probably a good time if somebody wants to make the motion regarding acting mayor.
Council President?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make motion to nominate Nick Dutrow to the position of Mayor Pro Tem.
Acting Mayor.
Acting Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? Yes, Councilwoman Hayes?
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Council Reisner?
We're only talking about for a few days here. What, four days, five days at most? But I'd actually, if you're on the side, if Cheyenne's interested in doing it, it doesn't really bother me either way, but she's got the most time with council, too. And she was voted in, so I hesitate a little bit because she, because Nick was appointed by, somebody was voted in, but not voted in directly. So that's just my rationale.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Hayes?
Yeah, I think we've talked about it longer than they will actually work as acting mayor.
Yeah.
So I'm open for, the first suggestion, which was Nick, if the first suggestion would have been Cheyenne, I would have been fine with that. But he's, you know, in the building, and yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go. He understands what goes on. Sorry.
Any other discussion? Yes, Councilwoman-
It just-
Sorry, Law Director Fowler.
Thank you. Yeah, and just for the public's benefit, because they may not be aware, just so everyone's aware, the mayor is temporarily absent. He is out of the country right now. He has appointed Council President Bridget Boyle to serve as acting mayor in his absence per the charter. But she is also temporarily absent. So, and there's no provision in the charter or codified ordinances that provide otherwise as to who then would step in to serve as acting mayor. So that's why you're all being asked to sort that out and nominate someone.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Councilmember Doherty?
Nick Dutrow.
It's just a yes or no?
Oh.
The motion on the table is for Nick to do it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisner?
Yes.
Councilmember Snay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Thacker?
Yes. The motion passes six to zero. That's the legislation that will be introduced as Resolution 2025-22. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And you could put Councilmember Snay then as the sponsor.
Okay. Any other motions for this evening? Seeing none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution Number 2025-17, introduced by John Hayes, A Resolution Approving Mayor's Reappointment of James D. Supans to Serve a Four-Year Term on the Sandusky County/Seneca County City of Tiffin Port Authority from March 2nd, 2025 until March 1st, 2029.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-17. Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes, I'd like to move for passage of Resolution 2025-17.
Okay, is there a second? Councilwoman Reisner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. Resolution 2025-17 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-18, introduced by John Hayes, A Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment of David Cale to Serve an Unexpired Term on the Sandusky County/Seneca County City of Tiffin Port Authority from the Effective Date of this Resolution until March 1st, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-18. Councilwoman Hayes?
Yeah, I'd like the motion for passage of Resolution 2025-18.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Reisner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. Resolution 2025-18 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-19, introduced by John Hayes, A Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment of Marissa Huss to Serve an Unexpired Term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from the Effective Date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-19. Councilwoman Hayes?
Yeah, I'd like the motion for passage of Resolution 2025-19.
Okay, is there a second? Councilwoman Reisner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. Resolution 2025-19 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-20, introduced by Kevin Reisner, A Resolution Approving the Adoption of a General Fund Carryover Balance Policy.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-20.
Resolution Number 2025-21, introduced by Kevin Reisner, A Resolution Supporting the Preservation of the Federal Tax Exemption of Municipal Bonds and Declaring an Emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-21. Councilwoman Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Resolution 2025-21, Suspending City Council's Three Reading Rule.
Okay, is there a second? Councilwoman Jones?
I'd second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Reisner?
Basically, the reason for the suspension of this, it's, this doesn't cost us any money. It's for the, to show our support for tax-exempt municipal bonds, which Congress is at risk of sunsetting. And this just basically voices our support for them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension first.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. Resolution 2025-21 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-22, introduced by Dennis Snay, A Resolution Appointing the City Administrator as Acting Mayor of the City of Tiffin during the Mayor's temporary absence and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-22. Councilwoman Reisner?
Madam President, I move for passage of Resolution 25-22, Suspend the City Council's Three Reading Rule.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Hayes?
Yeah, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Snay?
Yes, Madam President. Ask for this because we need to keep the government going, city government going. And so that's what we urge the city.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Reisner?
Should we make a move to the chair afterwards?
I think he has to be sworn in, right, at the end of the meeting?
I can swear him in whenever, so.
Okay. Fantastic. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
And Thacker?
Yes. Resolution 2025-22 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance Number 2025-19, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the City Administrator to Prepare Plans and Specifications, Advertise For and Receive Bids, Recommend and Execute a Contract for the Seneca US 224 PID 120616 Urban Paving Project and Declaring an Emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-19.
Ordinance Number 2025-21, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, An Ordinance to Enact Chapter 937 of the Codified Ordinances to Permit the City Administrator to Set the Rates for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations and Declaring an Emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-21.
Ordinance Number 2025-23. I'm sorry, who's introducing that one?
That's me.
Kevin.
It was you, right, okay. Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance to Revise the Codified Ordinances by Adopting Replacement Pages thereto and Declaring an Emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 2025-23.
Ordinance Number 2025-94, introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordinance Amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to Appropriate Funds Into the Mayor's Budget.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 2025-24.
And that concludes the legislation.
Okay. We are now under other business. I think we have some committees.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
For the Ordinance 25-15, 25-16, and 25-18, for the Law and Community Planning. Is it yourself and Mr. Hayes?
It's me and Councilmember Snay.
Those three.
Okay, it's day and time. I'm pretty available.
Typically, next Monday, the mayor will be back in town. Does that work for you, Dennis?
Yeah, that'd be great, Monday.
So Monday, the, let's see.
10th.
The 10th, okay. And what time would you guys like to meet?
5:15.
Perfect.
Is that okay with you, John?
Sounds good.
Would you like to announce the meeting and time and location and the purpose?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yep.
So the meeting will be March 10th, 2025, at 5:15 PM. The meeting place is City Council Chambers.